I'm full of muscle. I got his email, thank you very much. Apologies for the late shut, we were working a little late on the meeting that we had. So, please call me to order. I'm sorry.
Call the roll. Roll call.
Call the order. Call the order. Call please, I don't know.
I have a new chair. Call the meeting. Judy Nelson.
Here.
Tom Coons.
Yep.
Emily Lee.
Here.
Andrea Anderson.
Here.
Eric Kavanaugh.
Here.
Alright, we'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God of all this time's nation under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all. Right, so now we're all. Click to the button. Oh. Nice. We'll open this up now to comments from visitors on the agenda that they would like to comment on. Alright, on the consent calendar, we have quite a number of our, um, our meetings we've had over the past month. We passed on, so our, uh, our board minutes, our workshops, or budget discussion, and of course, what is the letter of the board on the consent calendar?
Make a motion here in a second, consent calendar.
So, um, any discussion? Alright, and then all the favors people come and say, aye?
Aye.
Announcements?
Thank you. Recently, as you know, we've been spending an awful lot of time on budget prep, and we presented that last night. We'll be discussing it on this year's budget, present year's budget tonight. Just want to again thank my staff at the SAU for doing such an outstanding job. They've been working very, very hard at that. Did a nice job, and you saw the results last night. I had a, didn't get a chance to get into the packet, but we got our NASDAQ report on the enrollment, future enrollment. It's got the historical data, the past enrollment, so I just brought it for you for information if this, obviously you haven't seen it yet, so if there's anything that you want to discuss, we can put it on the future enrollment. It looks like the future projection is a slight uptick in enrollment over the next five to 10 years.
That's what we would expect.
So, um, interesting. So, just thought I'd bring that forward for you to look at.
Excellent, it's nice, it's actually, I'll tell you a comment, it's nice to see that uptake which we were predicting four years, five years ago, we were predicting that it would start and happen, and it's good to see it sort of officially validated there.
Yeah, there's a, if you, I just glanced through this because I just got it yesterday, and there's, for the five-year projection, it's up, you know, pretty good, around 18 students or so, and then there's a slight downturn for year 10, but still up from your present enrollment, so just slight increase there.
I like the exceptionally large font, by the way.
Well, I know, I printed that out, I'm sorry about that. I know, I was a little challenged with that myself, six. And the other piece I had is, at the last meeting, there were some questions about the withdrawal, and how does that go forward, and does the committee bring it forward, so I touched base with Eric Christina and the School Board Association in your package to see some of those answers for that.
Alright, and I'm going to sort of feedback on the SAU withdrawal discussion a little bit there. I met with Carrie Tyse, who is the Chair of the Marshwood School Board, last week, I think it was last week, I'm telling you, time is just flying by. She reached out because she wanted to make sure that we all knew that Marshwood is willing to, is there to support us as we go through this process. They don't know exactly what it is either, I explained a little bit of it to her, how that's going to go, and she said that they are there to support us and that they want to know that, that will, and I said, what I said was, the board doesn't make any decisions going forward, it will be a public committee, a community committee who makes that, those decisions. We have board members sitting on that committee, but that we very much appreciated their offer, and that we will be taking all of that, keeping all of that in mind as we go forward. And I also have had at least one member of the public say that they're very concerned about all the stuff they were reading in the paper, and what does it mean about this withdrawal, and so I was able to, so I'm just going to very quickly reiterate what I told that citizen, and that was that we still have to make a decision as to whether or not we're going to do our own withdrawal, we'll decide that this evening, and if we decide to do it, we will have a warrant article that will go, to be voted on by the public in March, saying that we will create our own withdrawal committee, we will come up with our own plan of how we're going to manage things after the withdrawal. That plan would then be approved by the State Board of Education, and then also go in front of the voters again, so a year from March would be.
So, previously you had said we would vote, that was an added step right there, is it a vote to create a committee that would explore whether we should?
No, 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 we decide whether or not.
So, we decide, we no longer have that committee?
No, no, if indeed the warrant article passes that says we want to explore, then the committee, then we form the committee.
It is not a committee to figure out the withdrawal, it is the committee to figure out whether.
No, you're right. You're right, the warrant article will say that we are moving forward with withdrawal, and we will now then, now create a committee that will then come up with a plan.
Plan for withdrawal?
Yes.
Got it, so you, sorry, just make sure that.
Yeah, and then, what, really, what you're deciding on tonight is to put a, if you're going to put a warrant article out there, if the warrant article passes, then that will create the committee, the withdrawal committee, and then the withdrawal committee will do all of the background, all of the, all of the options, and then they, that, that plan will go to the State Board. If the State Board says yes, this is feasible, then it comes back onto another warrant next year, and then the town will decide whether that's appropriate or not.
I guess I still thought that the committee was exploring what is the best option for Marshwood, whether that be to withdraw or to not withdraw.
Well, yes, but keeping in mind that Summersworth has already gone forward with their plan to withdraw, so regardless, we need a plan of how we're going to go forward without.
So, this is like a moving forward committee, not necessarily a withdrawal committee?
Yes, this is a moving forward committee.
Is that true?
We may still be SAU 56.
Right.
So, you're, you're a bit of a, this is a bit of a unique situation, because the majority, almost all the time, when a district is pulling out, it's a district that's deciding to go out on their own, and the other entity stays the way it is. In this particular case, you've already got Summersworth moving forward, so, and I touched base with Eric at the School Board Association, you could do nothing, which means that you would have to rely on what Summersworth's choice is, and then you, the State Board would have to decide in their report, in Summersworth's report, if that adequately took care of Rollinsford or not. So, in talking with Eric Christina, and I agree, I think it's in your best interest to go through the process, that way you're doing your study, looking at your best interest in presenting your plan, and you've got two things happening at once, and it may come that Summersworth pulls out and you stay with the SAU and reconfigure. It may come, after all of this is in motion, that Rollinsford pulls out and Summersworth stays in SAU 56 and reconfigures, so, but I think, and Eric said the same thing, I think it's in your best interest to put the warrant article out there, see if the community wants to form the withdrawal committee, the exploration committee, and then what that will do is it'll explore all of your options.
Is that clear? Because in our, in our options, we also have to have a plan of what happens with Summersworth. Summersworth also has to have a plan of what happens with Rollinsford, and so unless we choose to withdraw, we will, we will be doing what Summersworth decides for us.
Why is that?
The reason, the reason you have to do that is because when the State Board of Education looks at it, they're going to make sure that both districts are taken care of, that's why you need to do, they need to do a piece for you in the study for you, and you need to do a piece in the study about that.
So, if we did nothing, so we did nothing at all, Summersworth still has to look out for how it affects us, so if it's negative, negatively impacts us, will they allow us to go forward?
On the state?
Perhaps.
Depends upon who's defining negative.
Yeah.
Because if they put us at any type of disadvantage, the outcome of pulling out of the SAU, based on what you're saying.
No, I don't think they're going to look at it as if they put you in a disadvantage, I think it's going to, they're going to look at it as, is it feasible?
Yeah, does it do enough? I mean, and I think we're getting a little far afield here, but.
And that's what the, that's what the withdrawal committees are charged with, is coming up to, what are the feasible options?
And it gives us, and it does give us an opportunity to perhaps work with the Summersworth committee as well, to make sure that, you know, if we're both doing it, maybe we can overlap a little bit, so we don't have to come up with our own plan for Summersworth, we can use Summersworth's plan, you know, who knows, there might be opportunities.
But this was their, but this was their decision.
Yes, yes, we are, yes.
Let's play this out, and I'll just give you one scenario. Let's say that you don't, you don't form a committee, you decide not to put a warrant article on, and it fails. At that point in time, Summersworth is going through their piece of this, and they most likely will withdraw from SAU 56, which means Rollinsford is standing path, you have SAU 56, so your only option at that point is to restructure. You still, you still have SAU 56, so that's, you would need to restructure that entity.
And would Summersworth have to go forward a plan as to how we could do that to make it feasible? What's the extent to which they're required to go?
Well, they would, they would have to, if they pulled out, they would have to come up with some kind of a plan as to.
To show that it's feasible, for Rollinsford to keep that.
Which it will be, I mean, you would need services of a superintendent, services of a business administrator, and services of a special editor, so it might be one day a lead, two days a lead, whatever, whatever it comes out to, so, you know, there are ways that you could restructure that piece. Is it S? I don't know.
Not for us, that's true.
No, it's not for the board to determine, it will, there will be two board members sitting on the committee, that the makeup of the committee is prescribed by the RSAT, so, so, you know, we'll talk about that later, but I.
We jumped ahead.
We did, we did, is that further down?
It is.
Yes, it is, and I jumped ahead, and I apologize for that, so we've had a good start on that discussion, if we'll get to. Any other announcements?
That's all right.
Um, principal's update.
So, I have to apologize, I sent you a mostly updated principal's report, but one of the sections did not say correctly, so when I talked about the student-led conferences, it was like they hadn't happened yet. So, what I meant to say was, they were very well attended, and parents were very receptive to how students presented the information at those conferences, and we had some different unique ways of doing it, based on grade levels. Some students had binders, but they went in and had selected different pieces to share with their parents. The third and fourth grade classes, I know, had a technology presentation on the smart boards, they created something for parents to review as they were talking about their learning, so it was unique, I got to sit in on one or two myself with parent's permission and student's permission, so I thought overall they went very well, and as always, you know, telling parents that if they had a need for an individual parent conference, then they're always welcome to reach out to teachers. The only other thing I want to focus on is the community connections we've made over the past month or so. Last week, we had Liberty Mutual in to help sponsor an hour of code, they've done this for a couple of years, and they brought a team of nine or 10 volunteers, a couple of RGS graduates were on that team, who are employees at Liberty Mutual, so they were excited to come back and get back to their community. They went into each of the classrooms, they had designated some programs for students to go through different programs to solve problems, I call them problem solving, but they're, you know, on a computer screen, and as they solved each problem, they got to go a little bit further in the program, and if they completed all of the problems, then they were awarded a certificate of completion for their hour of code. The teachers loved having them here, they wanted them to come back, it helps kids become more technologically, not advanced, but savvy, in a good way, so that they understand processes for solving problems using technology, so it was a good day.
That's nice.
Yesterday, we took the whole school to the Rochester Opera House for the production of.
That's a long week, though.
Long week so far. One of our own was in the production, a young third grade girl performed, and we were able to watch her perform. One of our staff members' daughters was actually in the production as well, so we had some connections to people who actually performed, and that was sponsored by the Summersworth Women's Club, there was a little bit of confusion somewhere, I think I mentioned that it was the Rollinsford Women's Club, but it was actually the Summersworth Women's Club that sponsored that event. And then next week, the Police Benevolance Association is doing their annual sponsorship, it's been tradition that our kids go to a movie the day before December break, so we're going over to Wells, flagship cinemas, and they've been given the options of Mary Poppins and Spider-Man, which is overwhelmingly the most popular. Surprise, surprise, but there are some kids going to Mary Poppins, and they're excited, something to look forward to last week at school. And we are no longer fully staffed, we had a resignation come to my desk today, so we have a mainstream coach position that's open in first and second grade, so we'll bring forward something at the next meeting regarding our resignation.
Thank you. Any questions on the principals? Nick Garibby cannot be with us this evening, but fortunately, apparently they're not overlapping, they're, I don't know if they've worked this out yet, but Megan is here to give us the Marshwood student update, so Megan, the floor is yours.
So far for academics, Marshwood's halfway through their second quarter, and then a couple weeks after we get back from winter vacation on January 2nd, I think it is, a couple weeks after that, we start our midterm exams, so if anybody has children or friends or children, whatever it is that, that wants the schedule, I can already find you a midterm schedule, it's closed campus, if that is relevant, anything, for parents especially, so you can't pick kids up and bring them out in between exams, and they have to show up no matter what, even if they don't have exams that day.
That's interesting, some of the parents are not in here, so.
Sports, I wasn't sure, I sent a document to Nick last, for the last week, I don't want to share anything with it, but Marshwood has won the third year of the Class B state championships for football, we need, I believe it was, it's, I can't remember. Yes, yes, but it was, it was almost a blowout, so we did pretty good. Now we have basketball, both boys and girls, we have hockey, and the boys' hockey team is with Noble and Trinket, I don't know, like a combination, we don't have kids, and the girls' team is with Trinket and York, so we have both of those starting up, we have ski team, indoor track, and wrestling, the seasons are just kicking off, I know your daughter is on, yes, Ms. Anderson's daughter, diversity, basketball for girls, congratulations. Also.
I don't know what's up with that.
We'll get the injury report.
You actually did that. Actually, that's another injury, an RGS student, Jared Tomlin, has blown out his shoulder, he's out for four weeks, but he should be able to make it for the end of his senior year of hockey, so we trust, and Mike Pelteer is also on the wrestling team, and he is like, he's one of like the top guns for this year. Other updates, Marshwood had its 2018, 2019 National Honor Society induction last night, and two more of Rollinsford members, Elise Hasset and Amy Martinez, were adopted, so yay.
That's great.
This is kind of a last minute, I didn't know if this is relevant, but we have a new Rollinsford student member at Marshwood High School, he lived in Elliott, and now he's in Rollinsford, his name is Jay Wyman, goes right down the road for me.
Good to know these things.
There's a Marshwood choral concert, I believe it, it's actually tonight at 7:00, and just a couple thoughts that I had maybe, I noticed we had, like, Marshwood has a Hawk Buddy program, which is like, it's a volunteer thing that kids can do to get baby service, because you are required to have a certain amount of hours for your babies, and so what it is, is basically, once a week, kids go to either Central School, or Elliott Elementary, or Drake Works, or whatever, like whichever's closest, and they spend about 30 minutes of their time just like mentoring kids that need like a little bit of extra help at, like during the day, and whatever, I did it, and I thought it was really fun, but something I thought maybe more kids discuss with Marshwood, if they want to enter anymore, how Rollinsford's doing?
That'd be great. It's an excellent suggestion, Megan, and I believe it's.
Principal's writing here, seriously.
That's excellent.
Just because a lot more Rollinsford kids are getting into the Marshwood system now.
Which is also good, but why not have?
Have it as an option.
Definitely.
And then, a thing that I'm running up, because I'm a senior, I don't know if Nick mentioned it, but I'm going to try to keep track of all the Rollinsford seniors, like their college acceptances, and where they decide to go, so you guys can kind of see full circle, the school district, kind of getting their kids all the way up through where they're going.
It's a great idea.
Let's see, I have a few, so Addie Hendricks has accepted to two schools, Hussin and Keene State, Elise Hasset has been accepted to UNH, Lauren Ferentzelsi has been accepted to Franklin Pierce University in St. Holmes State, Irene Noura has been accepted to Grand State University, Hussin, and I've been accepted to the most.
Just stop mentioning that.
But that's all I have so far, but I talked to the principal at Marshwood, and hopefully I'm going to meet with the head of guidance and see if I can work something on that, so that I can get notifications when they send in something that they've been accepted, and you guys know when the success of Rollinsford students.
Fantastic, that's a wonderful idea. Does the school let them know, or are you supposed to let the school know? College that accepted sends something to the high schools?
They, the colleges send something to us, and the guidance is very, please, please, please let us know when you get accepted, so they, first of all, for congratulations, and second, to like, for mature college applicants, like track and see how many Marshwood students have gone and where, for what, so they're supposed to let the guidance know, so I'm hoping that like when one of the Rollinsford mains pops up, they're like, just email them, and they'll accept you.
Excellent.
And that's all I have, but, yeah, there's any questions?
That was very good, and I, and I think the rest of the board, everyone else, and I think people sitting here very much appreciate the focus on the Rollinsford students, so that we can hear how they're doing, that's very helpful to hear.
Thank you.
So, great, and good ideas.
I asked her a couple of quick questions while she's here.
Yes.
You know who the staff contacted, the Hawk Buddy program?
Allison Bulkey, she's like guidance person.
Correct, and is it all four grade levels, or?
It usually, I mean, it depends, but what, it's normally around like second to fourth grade is what it can be, but like if there's kids that like, like qualify for the Hawk Buddy thing, they can like, they can be in all different grades, like I, like one of my friends had a kindergartner, but I had a third grader, and it's just like, it's fun, it was like, they would, they would pull, we'd pull them out of class, be like, it's time for Hawk Buddies, and we'd go down, and if they needed help with homework, we'd help them, if they needed to blow off steam, we'd take them to the gym, or take them outside, and we'd go in like a separate room they had for Hawk Buddies, and we'd play games and draw and everything.
So, is it, is it, starting, does it start freshman year and go through seniors?
Juniors and seniors.
Juniors and seniors.
A lot of them's allowed to do it, because it's right after school, so you have to drive, but.
So, it would be at the end of the school day?
Yeah.
Wow, that's nice, yeah.
Because we would only like 30 to 40 minutes further, but we would drive there, and then right as school, and then bring them back up so they could go get their packages, so.
I have a question.
That's good, thank you.
It's a great program, I thank you.
Yeah, it's already started this year, but maybe if you can get in contact with her, maybe you can see if there's a couple of other students that maybe wanted to switch it, switch like halfway through the year, or maybe just for next year, or whatever, but.
Megan, thank you very much, you are of course invited to stay, but we will not keep you, because we know it's a busy time of year for everybody. So, I did have a question, and Marshwood doesn't have a hockey technical, do they, do they have hockey?
No.
Is that why they don't, or they use the door?
They practice in the morning before school.
Okay.
So, the hockey boards are looking pretty tiny.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. I'm so tired, I had to bed at like 8:30 last night.
That sounds so sincere.
Sure. Do you want to, it's up to you, or?
It's about, yes, it's about enrollment here at Rollinsford.
If you're interested, otherwise we can reset.
Please, no worries, because if you have any questions, bring them up next, at the next meeting. So, you are welcome to stay, but you are also, it's okay for you to leave in order with your rest of your evening. Thank you, Megan, that was.
You're welcome.
That was very helpful. It's nice to see you, and it's nice that at least one of you is here, and that's why it's nice to have two. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Move on to the financial updates, this, so we're looking at the current year's budget.
It's included in the packet, there really wasn't much change from last time, the transfer has been made, though, from the September into the July, like, $75,000, so that happens, also, I did look into the audit charges, we talked about that last time, what it is, is every two years is a reporting requirement for our audit, and so we have to pay for that service, and it's a two-year service, so every two years, that's why you're seeing the increase, so for next year, I left it at the 13, because we'll be paying for that again, so it's a two-year report.
I noticed that you left it in coming here, so, yeah, good, thank you. Any questions for Katie on the, on the budget, on this year's budget? Okay, then, then the next one is the coming, the coming budget that was presented last night to the Budget Committee, the presentation.
I guess at this point, is there, is there any questions or feedback, either the presentation last night, or on the budget itself, anything you'd like to see adjusted?
Presentation was awesome, thank you guys so much. I think the Budget Committee really appreciated the amount of work and time that they do it, it was very clear, um, it was exceptional, I just want to say, as the Budget Expert goes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. And I guess we'll know more once we get through negotiations.
Yeah, right.
Right, but I, I didn't see any adjustments that you had to be made, this was the budget we wanted to bring forward and, uh, brought forward. Okay, so, so we're done with that, right?
Yeah, the, the only other cases, the warrant article and the.
Yeah, I was gonna do, I was gonna do that earlier in the draw, but. All right, so then the next is new business, and it's the first reading of a number of policies of, that we had, did people get a chance to sort of look through those? Yes. So, and this is the first reading, we're not taking action on them, but is there any discussion on any of them? There were a number that, uh, the, the non-educational questionnaire surveys, research, um, not, I think there were, apparently there were two of those, yes, there are two of them, so, I'm hoping that, uh, those of you involved with doing surveys and whatnot, will have a, will, will have a chance to read this because they.
I really just understood that we always go through the superintendent, I mean, the board approves it, and we've always gone through the superintendent, so that really.
For our, for our circuit, you mean?
Yeah, it was put out, I mean, I, that's kind of what I got from that, that it needs to go.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. As far as the policies go, Lori Lane's been working through the policies, and if this format works for you, what we'll do is just put, um, you know, three to four policies in per meeting, we'll cycle them through the first reading, the second reading, and keep the, keep the flow going so we can update them as we go, et cetera.
He's recorded too.
And the ones on the home, homeschooling ones, like, um, basically the saying stated, or I'm trying to find the right word, what was the right word? But I would need to read. I'm just trying to find the right number for you. Yeah, Tom.
Home education? It's I, it's IA DJ.
But basically what you.
My eye test.
So, I mean, it, put in brackets, recommended policy.
Yep. They'll list, they'll list them as either mandatory policies, recommended, or optional.
Yes, and our, our, um, the, our, our practice has always been, obviously, we all put mandatory, we sort of have to, recommended, we, um, we look at and see if we want to tweak them a little bit or not, for our purposes, and, um, and optional, again, we look and see if we want.
And the one that you're referring to is, is listed under the School Board Association Updates, so we haven't got the whole policy for that particular one in this packet, but those are all the little updates.
So, I, I had a question on, that I wanted to bring in front of the board to see what they would think of, the one that's patriotic exercises, it's IMDA, and, um, it talks about establishing a time to do the recitation of the pledge every day, um, participation will be voluntary, is the second sentence, and the last sentence says, says that pupils who do not participate in this recitation may sit or stand as they choose, but shall respect the rights of those pupils electing to participate, and, um, I'd be interested in hearing what the board, what the, if the board would, um, think, I, I would like to see pupils who do not participate in the recitation, um, shall respect what the other people are doing, I mean, saying that they must sit or stand, I think that's perhaps, that's a, I would just strike the.
Just leave that out.
I would just strike the, um.
It's like one of the things to say.
May sit or stand, yeah, it's like.
What, are they gonna lay down?
Only sit or stand.
Yeah, I mean, that's, as long, as long as they're being respectful, I, you know.
Agreed.
I don't, I, I just don't, I don't like to constrain anyone that we have to.
And now we're understanding what it's all about.
Hmm?
Just to get the edit correct, pupils who do not participate.
In the recitation.
In the recitation, shall respect the recitation.
Right.
It's because, back in my day, if you didn't say the pledge, you had to still stand, and I feel like this is just saying, you don't have to stand, may sit, but I, I see where it could be.
And I see that too, and, and.
Should have been different.
You know, it's a, it's a voluntary activity, and the recitation of the pledge is a voluntary activity, and it neither, neither construes that you're a patriot or construes that you're not a patriot, it's.
Yes.
It's a, it's a unison reading of something. Anyway, that, anyway, so I think that's, I get crazy about some of these things, can you tell?
That's, well, I mean, my first reaction was, oh, fun, but now that you say that, now as I think about it more, I'm thinking, well, if, I don't know, how are the kids that are gonna stand now, gonna feel if more kids decide, well, they're just gonna sit, and then pretty much after a while, kids, I don't know, I'm just not sure how it's gonna.
That's a teachable moment.
Exactly right, that's the teachable moment of, of why do we do this, but why is it important? Do we all have to do it at this time, do we have to do it every day? Those are teachable moments.
Yeah.
I, I was gonna ask that we strike the first sentence, that it must be done every day, but I thought that might be going a little too far.
Is it currently done every day?
Uh, yeah, it's not done school-wide, it's left up to the individual classroom teachers, but I don't believe it's happening every day in every class.
I am willing to strike that sentence, that it must be done every day, as long as, as long as there are discussions and that people go learn the pledge. I'm willing to strike that sentence as well.
I thought about that.
Do you want to give us some thought, we're not acting on it tonight, so.
No, I guess, is this like, if, if.
It's under, it's under the.
A teacher were not to, would they be able to be, would there be some disciplinary action tied to that? Because it's a policy.
If it's a policy, and it says it's to be done daily, and teachers have been told that this needs to be done daily because it's a policy, and that it doesn't happen, and yet there could be disciplinary action.
And these are our policies that we have to believe in so that we're enforcing them, so. So, I, I, I did, I did make a note that I would also strike the first sentence, that it has to be done every day. So, throwing that out for thought, and we can discuss it again at our next meeting.
Let's think about it.
So I'll make that one edit.
Well, again, we haven't taken action on it, but that's, that's how, the one way, yes.
Right, what I'll do is, is we'll do a strike through there, and you can still see it, and then you can have the final discussion, not in the first sentence, not in the.
Right, we'll still have the discussion. All right, any other discussion on any of the policies, or they, they will be actionable next, I don't know, next meeting. Well, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, um, we don't have a drone policy, and I'm not sure that the School Boards Association has come up with a drone policy, and the reason I'm bringing this up is that a lot of people have drones now, and if one should fly over and be looking in classroom windows, or be doing things, or out on the playground, do we want to have a policy where we can at least enforce it? I'm bringing this up because my sister-in-law was out in her backyard doing something, and a drone hovered over her for twenty minutes, and then went away, and then came back, and she realized later that maybe it was the people doing construction down the street which it was. They, they had, they had, they had contacted someone to take pictures from all angles to see who's gonna be upset in the neighborhood, but she thought, she felt very violated to have it, even though it wasn't taking a picture of her, so they said.
There are many states that have privacy laws, where drones are prohibited from flying over privately and without the consent of the owner of the land, I'm not sure what state she was in, or what the laws are, but, um, that's private property, this is not private property.
So we as a board could ask Bob to check, we'd see if.
Yeah, you could check with the School Board Association and see if they have a drone policy.
There might be a state law, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
New Hampshire just put that constitutional amendment in place for personal privacy, I'm not sure whether they passed a drone privacy law, but there may be a municipal drone privacy law also for public sector and, and rural private sector, I don't know.
I'll mention to the School Board Association, if, if they don't have one, I'm sure that they can look into it and find out.
Well, and then, then the question becomes if the child is the owner of that.
Upset.
Do, do we allow them to use it while they're on school property, you mean, that kind of thing? Well, again, that should be addressed, right?
Who would have thought?
I know, who'd have thought?
People thrown at home.
Yeah.
Eight years, never once have they talked about.
It's a big problem in more populated regions, I'm not telling you.
Dust removal, fire alarms, doors.
Anyway, everyone's okay with, while finding out if, if they've thought about it, and I, I'm thinking probably some bigger cities must have, yeah, such a policy.
What a good question.
You should have a motion to move all of those forward to the second reading. I make a motion, move all of the school board for a vote next time.
Second party, are you all in? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, those of you who are forward, and we'll get an update on the drone. All right, so the old business, we, we've already started this discussion, thanks to me, earlier in the, in the evening, is the SU fifty-six withdrawal, so, um, Bob did a great job clarifying what I was trying to say, so I think we're all up to date now on, on sort of what can and will happen, and so, one of the things we do have to decide is whether or not we want to place a warrant, I strongly recommend that we do place the warrant, so that we are coming up as a community with our own plan.
I agree.
We don't need anybody's approval.
No, we will be placing the warrant, it's, it's not a money warrant, what do you mean by approval?
Well, because it could be a money warrant, because it could have a financial impact, not that we need anybody's approval, but I'm just saying.
Well, no, no, well, we won't know that until, until the committee is formed, so, so this is, this is just to go forward to, to study withdrawal, you know, what are our options, what are we doing to form the committee?
Thank you, sorry, thank you, I'm sorry.
After which the plan will be another warrant, should be.
And I'll find out the appropriate wording for the warrant, if you choose to do that.
Yeah, your chair included in one of his.
I'll, I'll find it.
Can I just clarify the process, so once the committee determines what they think the best plan is, they then bring that plan to us, and then we present, we do a warrant article, how does that work?
No, the committee, the committee, once the committee is formed, the committee takes over, so the committee will do the plan and bring forward the best option, that goes to the state board, if the state board approves it, then at that point goes on a warrant.
Who submits the warrant?
The school board, because, I believe the school board, because it's the school district that will bring it forward, it was much like, I believe, it was much like our, our, our withdrawal from the area agreement.
What if they don't like that plan? Do we have to?
Well, don't, don't forget, we're gonna have two, two board members, they're gonna be sitting on the committee.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, if it, if it's our warrant article, I mean, we're putting our names on it.
I think those are excellent questions to ask, as, if indeed that should.
I mean, yeah, or.
I believe it's the committee, as soon as the, the committee, as soon as the committee comes up with the plan, I believe it's the committee that, I mean, that's one of the questions that I asked Barrett, I believe it's the committee that takes over.
And they present a warrant article?
I, I don't think that, well, I suppose they could, but I, as a petition warrant article, otherwise they're placed by, by the town.
They'd be twenty-five, but then maybe twenty-five.
Well, remember, remember, there was a withdrawal from the area agreement committee, and some of you may remember, there are a number of Rollinsford folks on there who were, who were gonna vote not to withdraw, until they had the public hearing, which will have to be held, and their mind was changed at the public hearing, and they stated that when they voted that night. Had, had, had they not had the public hearing, and had such overwhelming input from the public, we would still be in the area agreement.
So, but this is, that didn't then go on a warrant article?
It did, oh, it definitely did, then a plan had to happen, and it definitely went on.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, the plan went on the warrant article, got it, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so are you, are you, are you sort of following the, the parallel, the parallel university?
Yeah.
In, in posing that question to Barrett, he said, he said, if the state board, state school board approves the withdrawal plan as submitted by the committee, it notifies the respective districts, if the state board accepts the withdrawal plan, the plan shall be submitted to the legislative body, which is, which goes on a warrant article, and then it gets voted on and three-fifths of the votes cast, it's gonna be consistent.
So it's not having to follow the approval of the school board?
No.
But someone's got to put a warrant article in for that.
Yep.
This is like, we have to, a warrant article to set up the fund, and we didn't really put any money in it, but we just needed to have the article voted on to allow us to.
Right, this, for this one, right now, upon the committee.
Yeah, this one.
Yeah, and when that one is forward, in there it's, so.
It, it is the school board's job to, to seek the committee, too, so, so that's.
We need a motion, we need a motion to.
Do we need a motion to put a warrant? We do that by consensus, I'm saying.
Well, ultimately, you're gonna vote on all of your warrant articles, whether you support them or not, so if I'm getting five nods, I'm gonna put a warrant article on there, and when it comes back, you're gonna have to approve all of them.
Okay.
We're getting, we're getting.
Lots of, lots of.
At least three nods.
Tom, you nod?
Are you, anything else on the SU fifty-six withdrawal that we need to discuss at this time?
Where does we go here? To prepare some supporting materials for the town ahead of the vote.
Yes, yes.
Explaining what the warrant means, and what will happen, and.
I agree.
Yes.
I think that with the, the budget too, like we need to pull out some similar information, like we did last year, to talk about what it all means.
Yes, it would be good to have those ready for the, well, certainly for the deliberative session, which is in February, and whether or not, and it could be, I suppose, it would be good to have some of that ready for the Budget Committee's public hearing, which is January fifth, that, that might be a little early.
That's not what we need for the budget, we'll be ready for that, where they're still.
Be ready, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, January.
But we can at least talk about SU. And the operating budget?
Yeah.
Are you included?
Thank you. We have not, we have not reviewed our goals, it's, uh, we could do them, our next meeting I think is like six months, so we haven't gone down, we're saying, are we doing, are we meeting our goals, or not meeting our goals, but let's plan to do that at our January meeting, so that people are prepared to do that. Do we have any other actions, I don't think so, we're done with that, all right. All right, future meetings, very nicely listed out here. We're gonna have a busy January, at least the first, the first week. So, January 5th is the Budget Committee's public hearing on the budget. Apparently, some people will be quite busy over the holidays, getting all that ready. And Bob, is your intention to, more or less, do it the same way? Or will this be more of a PowerPoint presentation?
Well, I guess my question is, how has it been done in the past? Because the, the, I've seen it done a lot of different ways by Budget Committees. Some Budget Committees do it all themselves, sometimes the board does it. I, I need a little history here.
Yeah, the Budget Committee has historically not presented the actual budget. It's been, it's been the school folks doing it. And in the last, for the last four or five years, it has been done by PowerPoint.
Okay, we can do that.
But I'm gonna sort of defer to Emily here to see what she, how she would like to ask the... You've heard our feedback on the Budget Committee, I don't know.
No, I think, I mean, clearly, they were very happy with the way you presented the budget last night. I think if you could kind of distill some of the more important things from that. You know, charts are always nice, projections are good.
Yeah, we can put together a PowerPoint, and I don't mind presenting that, but...
And people, well, you expect to have a copy of the budget. Ours is the same one, it's been done. Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Do we have a...
With a memo, to, the highlights of the beginning.
Yes, and we should have, anyway, it should probably be on the website.
Yep.
A number of months ahead of time, a number of months, excuse me, we don't have a number of months.
I'll get it up there next week.
Before we leave all the cases.
Do we have a estimate on numbers that usually attend?
Fifty.
Not at, not at the public hearing.
Not at the public hearing.
We have, we have not gotten huge numbers at the public hearing.
So, how many copies would you like?
I would do...
Fifty?
Do you think that's too many? We can reuse them, if not, if not a lot, if not a lot changes, we can reuse them. Well, that's up to the Budget Committee.
The information's gonna be on the slide. People wanna get into the weeds.
So, you wanna do like thirty?
Forty, cut it down. We're halfway. Okay, this is a way I would do more than that. And I'm waiting to throw that in the...
So, you're gonna, so, so Tom's saying forty, and if we get it on the website and sent to town, and to Tia, who will post it on the town website.
Yep.
Okay. And then we could, and we could, yeah. We could have a few copies in the library as well.
I can drop some off, you know, we can do that.
Does that work out okay, have a few copies available at the town hall?
Should charge one.
Get some money for revenue.
The school participated in revenue, right?
That would be great. Because that is the, for Saturday, you know.
Yeah, right, we get back, yeah. I'll just tell my son that we'll be doing Christmas.
It hurts.
I'll have him collating and saving. The most Christmas funny is every sweatshop at my house.
That's right. Fifty more, and you get this present.
You haven't met your quota yet.
You might quota.
Any other thoughts on, on that, any other questions you have? And then, and then after that, then we'll have the next week on the 10th, I'm assuming we're gonna be on the Saturday, not the February, coming on Tuesday night. Our board meeting on the 10th, then the deliberative session on the 5th of February. We may have to have a meeting in between there, if the Budget Committee makes changes of any type, we may have to have a meeting in between to...
We really should publicize that, too, because it's a change from what we normally do, because it's normally a Saturday, and it's not this year.
Oh, yeah.
It's a weeknight, so...
Yeah, the 5th, yes.
We might wanna get that out there, so people know that it's at night and not a Saturday, because that's usually what they're expecting.
Yeah, maybe a clipboard way up, and we can get it up on the town website, and post it.
They should just email us, start now.
Yeah. Well... Yeah, sure. And then get it up to Tia and to...
I could also send you the schedule that we have in here, a PDF, and that way you can attach it to things, too, because that has all the dates on it, when things are due, and when meetings are...
The one thing that's not on there is when people get to sign up for...
I think that's not on there.
You could add that, I keep wondering when the, those periods are.
You mean, to get on the ballot?
Yeah.
For town positions.
Good, it's the same, sign up. All right, and then our snow date, and then, oh, our Valentine's Day board meeting in February?
No Valentine's Day?
Mike can sit right here, I'll bring him, and you can sit right here, I'm sure he would enjoy.
We'll have roses for everyone. Little chocolate cake, life will be great. But it's actually nice to see all these all the way out, so, thank you. Any other dates that anyone wants? All right, I think we're good. School events, again, are nicely listed out in the Principal's Report. So, listed out the school events, and that's very nice. All right.
Is that something you want me to take off the agenda and just have on Richard's Principal's Report?
You don't have school events. Oh, I see, I'm sorry, you do, we have, we have things on. Yeah, what do people think about that? I mean, it's... The only difference is, is that if indeed any are listed here, the public does see this agenda, and they don't see Richard's. So, it might be a good idea to take Richard's events and actually plug them in here. So, the public does see the agenda, and it's supposed to...
All right, I'll ask Alice to do that, then.
But they don't see Richard's. So, that would be great, because it is nice to see them listed out. All right, closing remarks by visitors?
Tracy Baldwin, I just, you did such a good job talking about the withdrawal possibilities, and the head nods and all that. So, warrant article this year, and then if it passes, then it would be warrant article a year later. And then we would be doing more, depending on what was going. So, we're talking a year, a year out plus before withdrawing and anything like that. I'm just trying to understand the timetable. So, we're talking a year or two, a year and a half, a year and a half to two years?
Well, there's a possibility that it would be effective July 1st of, how many, many years right here?
Twenty.
July 1st of 20.
Okay, so nineteen would be our March, this one coming up.
We're in eighteen, nineteen, next year's nineteen, twenty, so at the end of next year, July 1st.
Yeah, okay, at the end of the school year?
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking a year and a half?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just trying to understand what, because there is a lot of talk on the town, trying to figure out if something were to happen, how long we're talking, and what, and that kind of stuff. So, I just wanted to kind of wrap my head around it. It's not this year, it would be in the next year.
Right, it's a year and a half out, but let's, let's be clear, something is going to happen.
I understand that. And if the warrant article failed, what do we do then?
If this coming one fails?
Yes, this March.
Then Summersworth will decide, will have a plan for us.
So, then we wouldn't form a committee? So, if this warrant article fails, we would not form?
That is correct.
If it passes, right off, the committee is formed, or as soon as it can be put together.
Okay, so if it passes, it's in our hands. If it fails, it's in someone else's hands, it's in Summersworth's hands. What our S.A.U. is, maybe possible?
Kind of.
Kind of.
If, if it fails...
Or their ideas of what might...
If it fails, then they are going through the process. And if their process works the way they...
Want it.
Hope it will, then they will pull out of S.A.U. 56. So, if it fails, Rollinsford has S.A.U. 56.
Right.
So, what that means is, you would have to restructure S.A.U. 56.
There was a...
But that piece, that piece would be part of the plan their committee...
Their plan?
Yes.
Okay, and their, there was talk at one point, and I saw some of the writing, that are they definitely trying to pull out of S.A.U. 56? Because there was talk about restructuring S.A.U. 56 with us and them.
I think that, I think that anything is a possibility.
Okay, because that, that was something that was mentioned also.
Yeah, I think anything is a possibility, and it's really up to the two withdrawal committees to figure that out.
Okay, because I know that that...
There's a lot of different possibilities.
I understand, I just, this is, there is a lot of scuttlebug, and I just wanna make sure that I understand. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, people are throwing a lot of different things around of, you know, do you, does Rollinsford contract the service out? Do you shrink the S.A.U. and keep it? Do you have a district administrator position? Do you contract services back to Summersworth? Does Summersworth pull out and make their own? I mean, there's a lot of different scenarios, and it's up to the withdrawal committees to look at all of those.
Okay, together and separate? Separate and together?
Separate and together.
However you wanna word that, but, okay.
It is a bit confusing.
Just, well, there's a lot of stuff going on, and I just wanna make sure that we understand that for us to really have a say and an impact in what we are doing, and what we're doing, it needs to pass, and that, that warrant needs to pass.
To optimize your choices, yes.
Okay, thank you.
In my opinion.
Mine, too.
Nancy Dayon, I believe when we were reading all of the information, too, Summersworth has to actually come to Rollinsford for a public hearing, correct?
Both withdrawal committees need to have public hearings in the, in the, all of the districts that they affect, so, yes.
And we would, and we would have to, our withdrawal committee would have to go to Summersworth as well.
That's that parallel universe that's I don't know, yeah. We've been down this road.
Any other comments from visitors? All right, thank you very much, closing comments from board members.
One thing, I think maybe I should have spoke up during, spoken up during the whole business. Was that what came into connection? Oh, I'd love to hear about it. Okay, you might recall a while ago, some sixth graders interviewed our new administrators, and they got some very interesting responses from Dr. Godomski, Mr. Hubbard, and Ms. Allison. Those interviews are now up on the School Board website, under School District Notices. It's kind of hard to find, so I made a bit.ly, if you wanna check it out. It's bit.ly/schoolboardfaq. And we'll send that link out, probably, to some of our other...
Excellent.
...informational items over the next couple of months, but they are excellent.
Yeah, excellent, I got a chance to read them before they got published, and they were excellent. They did a nice job.
The kids did a great job, it was a lot of fun.
And you could tell the adults were enjoying it, too, with some of their answers. It was very good, thank you. Any other comments by board members? We do have a little bit of non-public, so we'll go into it, that's one that under negotiations.
We'll go to the non-public.
So, who else? More than Emily, second one, thank you. We didn't roll call, but that's all right.